For the prayer to be led by Alderman Bryant, followed by the pledge by Alderwoman Ross.
Heavenly Father, bless us for this day, bless this council that we make the decisions to, for the betterment of the city. Please watch over our brothers and sisters and fathers and mothers that are overseas, serving our military, so they be safe, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Blanket leaders. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I know Alderman Height was absent last time. I haven't heard anything from him, and I certainly understand that Alderman Witcher had indicated that...
There they are.
There's Alderman Height.
Alderman Witcher coming his way.
On his way, alright. Let me ask for the approval of the amendments of previous meeting. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion made and seconded, on the motion.
Bryant?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
We have Communications 1 through 4, I don't think, has any others been added, Ms. Whitby?
No, sir.
Do I have a blanket motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any one care to pull, any one of the four, on the motion, Ms. Whitby?
Bryant?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Let me direct our attention, and I know just wanted to point out 4, because we'll probably come back to that when we deal with the public hearing on the Southwind project, but I'm guessing that a majority of the folks here tonight are probably, when we move on to the insurance issue, will be one that we certainly want to take some time with. With that in mind, I'd like to try to dispose of the remaining public hearings before we get into that issue, so that some of those who are here for perhaps other issues, we might be able to at least cover that ground beforehand. Let me begin then with the one, unless there's an objection from the council on the National Electrical Code, 208 Edition. That's 07112, and I would, unless there's a reason otherwise, like to deal with the legislation shortly after the public hearing. With that, let me convene the public hearing on the National Electrical Code of 2008. Anyone care to address the council on that issue?
Have some questions from some of the landlords. Several months ago, y'all passed legislation that they could do minor repairs. Are you going to, is that going to affect any of this?
We have anyone, any city staff member here?
Major repairs, or minor repairs, replacing light bulbs, such as this. Any homeowner that is knowledgeable enough to do that can do that, but if according to the safety of it, that if, now I'm talking strictly from the homeowner's schedule of it, not anybody can walk in and say, "I can change receptacles." That has to be done by a qualified licensed electrician, or any other type that have active work that's done that way. Minor repairs, we're going to have to try to figure out what they're saying is minor repairs. Minor is really doesn't cover very much. So therefore, I say that you really, in order to come up to the Schedule Code like it's supposed to be, if you touch any part of the wiring, it's got to be done by a licensed bonded electrician in the state of Arkansas.
While you're up here, any other questions from any council member? Ms. Ross?
Well, I just...
Not yet, Mr. Ard. Just, we're talking to our electrical inspector, aren't we, or who are we talking to?
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, so if I want to change, say, a fan, a ceiling fan in my house, I wouldn't be able to do that?
If you are knowledgeable enough, yes ma'am. If you don't, if you own the house...
Okay. As long as you're the homeowner.
The homeowner can do that if you're knowledgeable enough.
Okay.
But I'm talking about somebody coming in and saying, "Well, we charge a dollar and a half, $2 to do this, this, and this." It's not licensed.
Okay, but the homeowner...
That is not a good thing to be.
So if I wanted to totally rewire my house, and I claimed to have the knowledge, and I did the work, then that would be okay?
As a homeowner, yes sir, if you have the knowledge of it. Now, the way that worked, we have to convene a board of electrical examiners, and therefore you come before us, and we question you as to your knowledge, sir.
If I chose to do that, I understand, you know, to talk, I understand where you're coming from, and I think I know where the gray line is drawn.
Okay, give you an example, I did go down and go before the board and get approved to do a building in my backyard, so I can still, we can still do that as long as we own the property or paying lease, okay? Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Alright, the microphone's still open for public comment. Going once, going twice, I'm going to adjourn that public hearing, and unless there's an objection, go ahead and ask Ms. Whitby to call 007112.
This is an ordinance amending subsection 18-98 of the North Little Rock Municipal Code to adopt the National Electrical Code 2008 Edition. This is the third and final reading.
Alright, let's get a motion for adoption on third and final.
So moved.
Motion made, seconded, on the motion?
Bryant?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Alright, let's go on, because I know that there's going to be a little more input on this, the next one in line, so let me go ahead and try to get these other two out of the way. Let me call a public hearing regarding 007110 with regard to groundwater beneath lands in North Little Rock pursuant to Arkansas Code Annotated 1455102. I'll go ahead and convene that public hearing, and ask anyone that might want to comment on that, please come to the microphone. Going once, going twice, adjourned. Mr. City Attorney, is there any reason why we shouldn't deal with this now?
You can proceed now, Mayor.
Alright, let's go ahead and call without objection 007110.
This is an ordinance to regulate the use of groundwater beneath certain lands in the North Little Rock, Arkansas, pursuant to Arkansas Code 14-1, 14-55-102, amending ordinance number 7697 to create the restricted groundwater overlay district, third and final reading.
Let's go ahead and get a motion for adoption.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the motion?
Bryant?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Ross, Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Alright, let me go ahead and go to the last one on our list, convene a hearing regarding R07130, that's amount of liens to be certified to Pulaski County Tax Collector. You know, we do this regularly, and this is a hearing, I understand, Mr. City Attorney, that's mandated in accordance with our due process procedure.
Yes, it is.
With that, let me go ahead and convene the public hearing on R07130, and ask anyone that wants to make any comments regarding this legislation, please come to the microphone. Going once, going twice, adjourn that public hearing, without objection, Ms. Whitby, would you call that legislation?
Yes, sir, a resolution approving amounts of liens to be certified to the Pulaski County Tax Collector against certain real properties as a result of grass cutting expenses and abatement of other nuisances by the city of North Little Rock.
Move for adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the motion?
Bryant?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Alright, let me, Mr. Voels, I think he's out there somewhere, would you move toward putting the map up with regard to the 601 Southwind Drive reclassification from R1 to R2, and granting a special use, and moving forward with that legislation? You know, I want to go ahead and open the public hearing, but I want to make sure that, do you have a little laser pointer, Mr. Voels, somewhere?
I have the cursor, I believe that would work.
Okay, well, what I'd like to do when we open this for public hearing, if there's anyone that wants to comment, I'd like for them, if they would, to help us geographically understand, after Mr. Voel points out, Mr. Voels rather, points out where this property's located, and what they, where the objection necessarily is coming from. I know one of the things we're doing downtown, and I think you heard me comment on this last time, is in many respects encouraging people to live closer to their jobs. Downtown has historically, at least in our older neighborhoods, if you remember, you know, there were grocery stores down the street, I know this in the Pike Avenue, Barren Cross area, perhaps others, as we expanded out, you know, zoning classifications became a lot more restrictive, and mixed uses were generally looked with this favor on. We're moving back in the direction because of a number of both national and international forces of trying to encourage people to live closer to their homes, and while that is a general desire, certainly tempering the request that's being made here, you know, there's also the tradition that we've had from long-term standing of being very sensitive to neighbors about increased traffic, increased, you know, we'll say movement within the neighborhood that's been traditionally residential. So while the clarity of this choice over the last, you know, five years has become more blurred, I think we all recognize the respect of those who live in the neighborhood is something that, you know, we all need to be extremely sensitive to, and thus, to me, the dilemma we in some respects find ourselves. And with that, you know, I'd like for Mr. Voels to just give a brief summary of where we are, the history of the Planning Commission, and then I'll open the microphone to comments.
Okay, we have, the Planning Commission itself noticed an article in Democrat regarding a spa and fitness center on Southwind, instructed staff to contact the owners. We did that and initiated the case, an application. This area is zoned R1, and we're asking for this deliberation before you today. Planning Commission generated a recommendation of not allowing, and it's before you for final vote. The House, if you can see the cursor, is at 66,001 Southwind, it's this location. There are two ways to that, one on Whitehead Drive here, and one on Mountain Pine and up to McMurtry around, and so it's, it's a area that has low density, it's all single-family residential, and there aren't any mixed use that I can think of. If you're familiar with it, this is wild river country, a large church is here, all along Crystal Hill Road is zoned commercial, and south of that is zoned residential. This area is in the county here, and the question, the house in question is at this location.
Now, is the other area up to the right?
That's in the county.
The county, so white is the county?
Yes, sir, white is county, and gray is in the city. We do voluntary annexations, and we get some odd boundaries at times, but that's, these are the areas that are volunteered over the, over the years.
Now, will you please make sure that both we and everyone knows that the legislation before us with special uses, if I'm not mistaken, what are the conditions of the special use?
The legislation before you, Jason, it limits it to one customer at a time, and the no customer parking on the street, and I wanted to make sure the applicants agreed to those conditions. I don't think those were, or those may be a little more stringent than we discussed at Planning Commission, I don't remember them being on there, but the applicants here, and they can discuss those for you.
So if we adopted this legislation as is, then that would mandate that no more than one customer, and no parking on the street?
That's correct, under this legislation.
There's some confusion. Their attorney said that they thought that that house on Southwind was in the county and not in the city. It's in the city for sure, you know for sure?
It's in the city limits.
Okay.
Your point, the house that you, we're talking about, 6001 Southwind, is located in, under the little spy glass with the, or magnifying glass with the...
Right.
Whatever that designation is on it, so that is the house that you're talking about?
Yes, sir. I firmly believe it's in the city, we certainly can check that, now that whether it's in or out of the city, there's zoning for this entire territory.
Okay.
So it really shouldn't matter whether it's in or out of the city.
Okay. One other quick question, and could, out of all this, you know, I used to live on Southwind, and I've talked to neighbors up there, and there were two people that complained, and you know the street that, I can't think of it, that leads off? Can you show, show the mayor and the city council who they are, where they live that are complaining?
There's a private street that comes off here, and I believe the two parties who objected recently are in these two homes here.
Do we have any written documentation from them?
I don't have that.
I don't have anything, and I haven't heard.
At one point, we, we did receive an email, I remember that it was at, it was distributed to the Planning Commission, I think from Mr. White.
Right, but the file is not here, I think Mr. White did send a letter, but I didn't bring the file today.
Well...
That was it.
So we recall one objection, do we recall where it was from?
Mr. White.
Two weeks ago.
Mr. White's home, I believe, is this home.
The house there.
Is it this one? It's the lower one, I thought that was a different person's home.
Okay.
I think, I'm pretty sure that's Mr. White's home.
Wait, wait a minute, wait a minute.
Neighbors seem to know whose homes are whose better than me.
Okay.
And they, they're saying Mr. White's this home, and I'm incorrect, and I'll accept that.
We are, we, it's nice to own up to our mistakes. Mr. Voels, why don't you find a, a laser pointer too somewhere, I know there's one over in my office, if you could find one, because that, you know, might rather somebody in here be able to move it around. Would you make that a little bit smaller, so we can again go back to the general area? Okay, I think that...
Is that better? Yeah, my point is, old mayor, too, is how far, what the distance is between those two homes, not even on Southwind, and they're way off the side, whereas they had petitions, they were kind enough, the riots didn't have to, but they walked every neighbor around there to sign the petition, and to allow them to continue to do what they've been doing for the last two years.
Yeah, let me might suggest, if I could, Alderman, that we get the public hearing part done, and then when we have the legislation in principle, we can, we can certainly make our arguments. Anything else of Mr. Voels? Alderwoman Ross?
Mr. Voels, this R2 with special use, does, if this house is, if this homeowner sells the house, does it remain in R2?
It remains R2. Now, the special use would go away.
But the next person...
The special use are agreements to individuals.
The button right there.
I can see it, but I think the cursor's better, but...
I don't see it, so I guess you're right.
So, here's my question.
Do you see it? Okay. Anyway, the, well, we really zoomed out that time. What was the question again, I'm sorry?
Okay, so this is an R2 with special use.
Yes.
So if this homeowner sells the house, and in R2 you can have, say, a government office is allowed in an R2?
Well, R2 is single-family residential with the ability to ask for special use permit.
Right.
So the special use permit's in agreement with this party only. If they sold the home, the use would go away.
But we're setting a precedent here, so say the next person that buys this house wants to have a government office, or whatever, because public offices are allowed.
They would have to apply.
They would have to apply.
Now, they could do a home office, but if they wanted to do a, a commercial business in conjunction with the home, they'd have to file a special use and come back through the process, which is a hearing at the Planning Commission, and a final deliberation here at the council.
Okay, and if they wanted to bulldoze it and put in a baseball park, they could, with a special use, right? Isn't that ballparks allowed, or parks are allowed in an R2?
Well, this is a subdivision that was approved through the Planning Commission.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it's zoned residential, and it's developed out as lots, so...
Mr. Gertz, could I, excuse me, just, Mr. Gertz, could I get you to come up here a second?
But there's an empty lot next door to it also, right?
Yes, and it, someone could build a home there.
Or a government office, or a ballpark, right?
No.
If they had, if they received an R2 with a special use, right?
R2 is single-family residential.
Okay.
They would have to come back before the city for a special request.
Right.
If they wanted to sell doughnuts, or put a Wendy's there, they'd probably have to rezon if they wanted to do a Wendy's building, but if they wanted to do something of special nature that could be made to be fit into the neighborhood, they should come and ask for permission to do that.
They could come back, okay.
We've been somewhat, we have a lot of special uses in the city, we've, we added conditional use, hoping to go to a predetermined list and approve off that, but it's, it's supposed to stay in character with the neighborhood, so the conditions we impose under special use are to try to keep it in character with the area.
Why did we go to R2 rather than R1 with a special use?
The zoning ordinance specifically does not allow a special use to be requested in R1, so it's your most restrictive zoning category. They have to request at least a rezon to R2, the next residential zone, and then they can ask for a special use permit. So it's a two-step application, a rezon to R2, which would allow them the ability to ask for a special permit.
Alright, so tell me again, explain the differences between R2 and R1.
R1 is single-family only, with no ability to ask for special permits. It's, you have to occupy a single dwelling only, detached.
Okay, yeah, so if, this would be the only R2 zone, and R2 designation with a special use in that neighborhood?
Some of the areas zoned R4, so the most, most all of this area is zoned R1, the area over to the east in white is zoned R2, along Young Road and Sherman Park, and we've had...
All around this house is R...
R1. And south of it is actually Conservation.
What, yeah, I assume this council, if we chose, you know, could set up a procedure, you know, where this kind of use would be permitted in R1. I guess the thing, you know, that's, that has now stumbled me a bit, you know, is, is, you know, I'm generally, absent looking at what objections might be in the neighborhood, I'm generally in favor of moving and permitting things like this with, with very, being very sensitive to neighbors' comments.
Right.
But I'm reluctant to move to an R2, you know, and rezon that one section when I'm just looking at trying to make an exception for this.
From time to time, we look at our home occupations that are allowed in our residential areas, and that's how you would allow this, by right, you would say that this is an acceptable home occupation, and list it specifically under your home occupation, I believe that's how we would proceed. If you wanted to say this is a permitted use in all of the R1 areas, this has come up time and time again, I think it became a little more restricted this time at the, in 2005, when the city chose not to have any, any use that would, would demand that traffic come into the neighborhood. That was a specific provision, I mean, we generally don't want to sell goods out of homes, hard goods, and we don't want traffic in the neighborhood, that's generally the problem.
Well, I mean, I've got a fellow that comes, you know, and mows my yard, and obviously, he has to get there some way.
And that's an impertinence to keeping maintenance of your yard, but, thank you. But, you know, it has to be done, but it's not the same as, as, I mean, we have piano teaching, tutoring, those type things that are sometimes done, and that may be the better way to approach something like this. If you want to allow it by right, ask that the Planning Commission study how we're handling home occupations, and make it more liberal in certain areas.
Well, let me, let me raise this as an issue, my concern, you know, is in part addressed by the restrictive aspects of the special use with regard to the parking restrictions and the clientele in some respect. If I did it by an exception, like you're saying, at home, I wouldn't have, I, we, whoever, wouldn't have the option of putting those special uses on there, would we?
There wouldn't be a need for a special use if you said it was a liable...
Well, what I'm saying is that we wouldn't have any vehicle to put any kind of restrictions on, on traffic, or access, or parking.
Well, you could put that in the zoning ordinance as a restriction of allowed home occupations.
Is there anything there now?
Certainly, we have a list of home occupations that are allowed in our residential areas.
But are there restrictions in terms of parking, or access to the, to the business that's now being permitted in homes under R1?
I can't think of any that are that specific. They're, they're more general, but we could, we could evolve the home occupation section of the zoning ordinance if you chose to include these conditions that keep the character of the neighborhood.
You know, obviously, Alderman Gaines is sponsoring this legislation, you know, as I've said before, I generally favor things like this, but I would be concerned about opening a new zoning right next to R1, and, and, you know, so, I mean, I, we'll see what happens on this, but I, I think I would favor a different approach, much more so than this approach. Alright, I'm sorry, anybody else? Let me go ahead and open this for public comment, the microphone's open, we'd sure like to hear your comments, and Mr. Voels, if you could get that map back up on there, and we have a...
I've got a question.
Of Mr. Voels?
Yeah.
Robert, Alderwoman Robinson has a question.
Okay.
Robert, my question is, one of the conditions for this is that only one client will be allowed on the premises at any one time, and, and how, how did you come up with that? Only one client at a time? Is this something that the applicant asked for, just to have...
Was that in the original request?
Was that, yeah.
I think what Robert said is it came over to the city attorney's office without any conditions, so...
Right, and, and then whenever we were trying to forward it together for, for city council, I guess tried to pull out what we, what we found were some of the general conditions that were discussed in the Planning Commission, just to have something forwarded, but there weren't approved conditions that came out, because the matter, it came forward without a recommended vote of approval. And honestly, there were a few other things that were discussed there, too. There was one about signage, I know that prohibited signage, but that wouldn't make sense for home occupations anyway.
And, and I guess my thing is, how do we, how do we, how do we control that?
Yeah, how do you police it, that's a good question.
How do we police that? Because two, two customers could show up in one car, you know, one client would be allowed on the premises at any one time, you know, I just, you know, how do we police that? How do we control that? My girlfriend and I, we may want to ride over there for, for training, so there are two of us on the premises at one time, in one car.
And I, I agree with you, I said that at the Planning Commission meeting, that I don't see how we could enforce, because who's going to be sitting there watching, counting the number of cars in the area?
I'm not.
The neighbors probably would help us with that.
Well, one of the things, too, I might suggest is that, you know, as we, as we go forward, and let's go to the public hearing right now, you know, that, that opportunity will be there to amend if anybody should choose to do that. You know, again, my concern at this point is of the approach with respect to the C2, or R2 rather, but that, that would come up in the actual voting part of the, the agenda. So with that, let me go ahead and open up the microphone, please identify yourself, and feel free to make your comments.
Good evening, I'm Lorraine Hatcher, I'm an attorney in Little Rock, and I represent Terry and Michelle Wright in their bid for approval of the use of their home for this activity. Just a couple things very quickly, I, I think that the mayor is on the right track here in terms of considering the proposed use that, that they are seeking here as a home occupation, for which you already have legislation in the North Little Rock zoning ordinance specifying what kinds of activities constitute a home activity. Things like Mary Kay sales, where you might have UPS or FedEx trucks rumbling up to the door, and not an uncommon or an unusual occurrence as a home-based occupation. Piano lessons were mentioned, I remember as a child going with my siblings to piano lessons, and there were certainly more than one of us at a time, I have three sisters, and we would all gather at the home for piano lessons, and that was certainly reasonable occupation conducted out of that residential neighborhood. Tutoring is another one of those home-based occupations that's within reason and, and within the guidelines already established in the North Little Rock zoning ordinance. Along those same lines, the kind of tutoring that would be conducted by Mr. Wright is physical fitness, so it comports with the same standard, the same level of, of occupation and activity. Councilwomen correctly noted, there might be more than one person driving up to the home in one vehicle. If your concern is with the amount of traffic traveled on the street for this home occupation... If your concern is with the amount of traffic traveled on the street for this home occupation, certainly the number of people in one vehicle would not raise your eyebrows unnecessarily because it doesn't contribute to excess traffic as long as they're all arriving in the same vehicle. So to your question, how would you police something like that? I think it is appropriate to suggest that the neighbors would be more concerned with a, an excess or an influx number of cars on the street as opposed to the number of visitors they have to their home. I think it's instructional that we just recently celebrated Thanksgiving. And in many neighborhoods, there were any number of cars parked on the street, people traveling to other people's homes for that occasion. And they were not limited as to the number of cars that they could have in their neighborhood for the purpose of entertaining guests for dinner. So I think that the activity that's being proposed here is entirely consistent, not only with the neighborhood itself, but also with the home. And I've extended personally an invitation to each one of you to come out and have a look. The article in the Arkansas Democrat Gazette was almost something of a spoof or a kind of tongue-in-cheek to call it a resort and a spa. It just so happens that they have those kind of amenities in the house. But it is far from a resort and it is far from a spa. So I would again urge you and invite you to take the opportunity to come by and have a look for yourself. Their property lends itself to no on-street parking. They have ample driveway space where even if there were two cars visiting their home, neither of those cars would need to park on the street and obscure, obscure or interfere with ingress or egress from the street. One other thing I would like to point out is that a couple of times already this evening, I've heard that the, the mayor and certainly other council members as well are sensitive to any objections raised by the neighbors. It's interesting that all the appropriate notices have been sent, both prior to the planning council meeting, prior to the last council meeting held here about two weeks ago. And the only response there's been to that has been the email that was sent prior to the planning commission meeting from the Whites, who live more than a thousand feet from the, from Michelle and Terry Wright, and not on South Wind Drive at all. No other objections have been voiced or expressed in writing. And I'd be interested in knowing if there are other people at this council meeting, which is the whole point when you have a public hearing, giving people an opportunity to express their opposition if in fact it exists. So with that, I'll conclude my remarks. There are some neighbors here who would like to speak in favor of the Wright's proposal.
Let me just, and that's fine, and we'll certainly open that up. But in, in, in response to certainly your offer, let me also make that offer for anyone who is objectionable to this. We would very much invite your comments at the microphone at this time. You know, that, you know, then we'll go to those who might want to say something in favor and, 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 you know, can go back and forth from that perspective. So let me open the microphone and make a request of anyone who is opposed to this here at this time. Would you please come to the microphone? Going once, going twice, all right, support, if you'll come to the microphone, identify yourself.
Mayor, council, my name's Ken Fletcher. My wife and I live right, uh-
Okay.
We live across the street. There's a vacant lot and then we live one down from the vacant lot. South Wind Drive is on a, it's like an apex. It's the mountaintop there. And it's, on Terry's side of the street, it's downhill. And on my side of the street, it's kind of downhill gradual. But it's, but nothing else could be like a baseball, couldn't be built, it's just straight down. So anyway, my point in saying that is, we have no objections whatsoever with, with what Terry's been doing. He, he conducts his business in a very professional attitude. He's even got some, a little signage out there, "Don't park in front of the mailbox." And rarely do I see several cars parked there. One, two, that's about all I ever see. Most people who live on South Wind are professionals. I'm a loan officer, I'm a consultant. We have a lawyer's, you know, doctor, we have everything. But they're professionals. And in my, in my attitude and my support is I'm for it. Thank you.
Any other one that wants to come to the microphone? Please identify yourself. And Mr. Voiles, if you could get our map back up wherever you are, just so people can refer to it. And then you darken the room again a little bit so we can see it. There we go, okay, thank you.
I think they did it in the back.
Oh, magic.
Honorable Mayor Patrick Henry Hayes in City Council. My name is Nancy Mullenax. And I've got a few things here that I've written, because I can't remember real well. But Terry is a personal trainer. And that means he has only one client at a time. That means only one car at a time will be at his house. He bought the vacant lot next door to him in front of his, right by, right next to his house for additional for where he parks his car a lot of times and leaves a front open or the private driveway, his private driveway for his client to park in. And there's never, there's never no loud talking or partying and it doesn't bother anyone. No one would ever even know there was a business there unless they were told. And we heard that there was a Mr. Wright that is coming against it. And he doesn't even live on South Wind and is approximately two blocks away from us. And I don't see how in the world this could affect him in any way. We live right next door to Terry and Michelle. And we're proud to have them for neighbors. In fact, they're the best neighbors we've ever had. Anytime we ever need any help, our land goes straight down in the back. He keeps a backyard for us. And if he, if we need heavy objects to lift, he's always there. And there is not one family on our street that opposes this physical training business. One of the main doctors of the heart hospital comes every week, which says how good of a trainer he really is. We think it would be a disgrace not to allow him to continue. They are hard workers and are very motivated to climb the ladder. This business has helped, helped put his wife through college. And she has now earned her doctorate degree, which is such a great achievement for anyone. They are top citizens of North Little Rock. We have the Arkansas Safety Council and we have taught defensive driving in the North Little Rock courts, for the North Little Rock courts, in the community center for 21, for the last 21 years. And as citizens of North Little Rock, we ask that you please reconsider this favorably. We know the Wrights have been told that we're not in the city limits. In fact, one time they delivered the big garbage cans and we got one. And then two days later, they came back and picked it up and says, "You're not in the city limits." So I don't think we're in the city limits, if that makes any difference. And we thank you so much for your consideration in this matter. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Microphone's still open. Mr. Carter, let me, with the permission of the proponent, again, my major concern at this point is not, you know, the end. I, you know, I personally support finding a way to make this happen. My concern is with a rezon right next to two R1s, you know, I would be much more, you know, I, I feel pretty strongly about this, about the, the approach. And, and I would, would either by an amendment of this existing legislation, obviously with the proponents' concurrence, or by withdrawal and filing new legislation. You know, because my concern again goes to, I think it ought to be permitted, but I also think that there ought to be either some guidance in terms of parking or access. And I'm not real familiar with, you know, how, what the best way to do that approach, whether it be on an ad hoc basis or whether it be, you know, with some rules that would be attached to it. You know, do you have any guidance for us?
Mayor, I, I think your approach makes sense. What you're saying is really, it's not just to look at this particular home-based business in North Little Rock, but more of the approach that we're taking to it right now with the whole rezoning process. And really, if something's not going to be egregious, if it's going to be very limited in, you know, the number of people who are going to be frequenting the location with no signage and things like that, things of that nature, it, it almost seems more akin to the type of home-based businesses that are acceptable in R1 zones, such that a rezoning wouldn't be required.
Well, and that's kind of where I'm at this point, you know, coming from. And, and, and I, you know, I would have to oppose this legislation at this point simply because of, of the approach. You know, I support the end result, but the approach to me is the wrong way to do it. And now my question is whether this can be taken care of by amendment or should we file a new piece of legislation?
If, if you could, one, one idea the council may want to consider is, if, if you could hold it and allow us to come back with some kind of home occupation amendment to the zoning code and that we could possibly substitute, then that may be acceptable. You know, where it keeps it on the forefront. I'd say not to withdraw it because it keeps it on the forefront, it keeps us on the agenda. But to possibly substitute other ordinances as an amendment to the zoning code in general.
Alderwoman Robinson?
When, when you say "hold it," how much time are we talking about?
I'm saying two weeks.
I'm saying next council meeting, because I mean, these folks have been waiting this long for an answer. And, and, you know, I, I'm half tempted to try to fashion something tonight. But, you know, with the lack of a cookie-cutter ability to do an approach, I'm a little bit at a loss for haste makes waste on this. So I really wouldn't want to do it any more than two weeks before we give an answer. And I, at this point, at least I would, if I'm in a position, would have to oppose the approach because of the rezon of R2 and the neighbors still being R1. And if, now, help me answer this question. You know, in five years, or a year, we rezoned it to R2 and, and these folks leave and they tear their house down, build a duplex, and that would be permitted under R2?
I don't know if duplexes are permitted under R2.
R4.
R4. What, what could they build that's not there now?
It's a single-family residential is a R2 zoning category.
So the only difference between R2 and R1 is under an R2, you can ask for a special use and under an R1, you can't? Is that basically-
That's correct. I, I would say that amendment to the zoning ordinance, mending home occupation probably ought to be deliberated by the planning commission before and get a recommendation rather than a quick turnaround.
Well, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Voiles. But, you know, we've had this before us for, you know, at least, at least two weeks. I mean, it's been before us, I think, the last council meeting and now. And, and, you know, I certainly, I, I would prefer us finding a way to move forward and then perhaps take a little longer and maybe do it on a broader context. Alderwoman Ross?
Well, I was just looking at my little chart here of things that are permitted in R2. You can have an adult daycare in an R2, is that not right? I mean, can you, can't you have an adult daycare in an R2? I mean, just on this little list that you gave me, yeah.
Yes.
I mean, I've been looking at the different things in R2. And there's, you know, athletic fields, public and private in an R2, there's-
Correct. And it's, I'd have to review all that would be allowed.
And then there's several things with conditional uses.
But this line is unique.
All right, we're, we're starting to get a little, I'm sorry, but, you know, apparently there is a lot, there is some more difference in R1 and R2 than simply a, a special use. Alderman Witcher?
And Mayor, I think Ms. Wright and I were talking among ourselves regarding R1 and why we couldn't have a special use under R1. Could someone explain it to me?
Because that's what the rules say. That's the only reason why. Because that's what our zoning ordinance says.
Can we change the rules then?
Well-
Absolutely.
Okay, and, and let me ask you this. You know, if, if, if we decided we wanted to have a special use in R1, there is, there is, it says the provisions of this ordinance are hereby declared to be severable. If any section, phrase, or provision should be declared or held invalid, invalid, such invalid, invalid shall not affect the remainder sections, phrase.
So what'd you say?
Don't read that, lady.
Well, I, I guess what I'm saying is, you know, we make the ordinances and if we want it to be a special use, why can't it be a special use?
Well, I guess you could. If you want to, if you want to say, hey, we're not gonna, we're not gonna change ours zoning ordinance, we're gonna give a special use in an R1, it'd be an odd thing to do. And I'd ask you to, that you would rather change the procedures in the zoning ordinance such that special uses could be awarded in R1.
Let me, let me tell you what, you know, we, haste makes waste. Two weeks is not that much time. I'd, I'd ask the proponent, and we'll work with the applicants, and we'll fashion a, a, an amendment that somewhat addresses at least my concerns and perhaps some of the concerns that I've had. And we'll make sure that this fits with the, the applicants. And then we'll bring it before the council in, in two weeks. If that is something, obviously, I'm sure he wants to hear from the-
Still in public hearing, but that's gonna come up first.
Yeah, yeah.
Ms. Wright, would you all like to come up for a moment?
Ms. Wright, would that be all right with y'all? They're trying, they're really trying very hard to work with y'all, with us. And if that would be okay, in two more weeks, we'll vote for it for sure. And, and the mayor and everybody gets, can get behind if we can.
Absolutely.
And we may not do.
Thank you.
Y'all want to say anything to the mayor or the city council while you're here?
Just want to say good evening to everybody.
Well, thank you very much. And certainly, your neighbors being here speaks volumes for us. Alderwoman Ross, did you have some-
I just, it's saying that we could vote on this two weeks. We may need to hold this for a public hearing or something also to, if we're changing the zoning laws in the city, I mean, in the R1. I don't think that's something that we should rush through in, in two weeks either.
If you think that a public hearing is warranted, then we can certainly hold one.
I just, I think we're getting really hasty if you're saying we're gonna do it in two weeks, no matter what, but-
Well, nobody's saying no matter what. The only one that can say no matter what is a majority of this council.
Right, but I just don't want them to, you know, definitely gonna vote it in two weeks if something comes up.
I mean, you know, what we're, I think, I think everybody, you know, is pretty well on the page that we're trying to find a way to make this systematically a way that the council can address not only this issue, but those that may come up in front of it similarly in the future. And, and that's why my concern is that there is a better way. And we'll make every effort to fashion an amendment, you know, that the council can address. And obviously, we can't commit that they'll vote on it. Only four hands in mind can do that, or five hands can, can do that. But, but I, I feel like we're all struggling to try to make, find a way to make this happen so that in the future, similarly, similar requests can, you know, perhaps be reviewed in a similar way.
I want to thank you, Mayor. My name is Terry Wright. I just want to thank you, Mayor, and the rest of the city council. I appreciate you guys. I just thank you all. And I wish that God would grant you all the wisdom and the knowledge and understanding of dealing with this matter. And I appreciate you. I just want to say thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you and thank you all for being here. And we'll see what we can do with that. Why don't we go ahead and call this so we can, you know, seek the, you know, the, the comments of the sponsor and, and we'll, you know, soon he'll hold it. So with that, Ms. Whitby, would you read it?
This is an ordinance we classify as certain property located at 6001 South Wind Drive in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, from R1 to R2 classification by Men's Ordinance Number 7697 of the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, and granting a special use to allow your fitness training business and spa in an R2 zone. Second reading.
Okay, and I assume you want that held now? All right, and, and we'll, you know, try to fashion an amendment that we think, think is, is in keeping with what we've been talking about. All right, let's go ahead to public hearing, R07118. Resolution designating Stevens Insurance LLC with Qualchoy as a major medical provider as health benefit for city employees effective January 1, 2008. We thank you all for coming. And let me go ahead and convene, convene that public hearing. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and just recess that previous public hearing that we just finished. And, and, and Ms. Whitby, just indicate on the agenda that we will reopen comments at the next council meeting on this same issue. And we'll be dealing with the amendment at, at that time. With that, let me again offer the Qualchoy folks that are here to come up and give a summary, if you would, of anything that's transpired in the last several weeks. Anyone from Qualchoy here? I see Mr. Whitfield out there now. And I, I, the one thing that I know, I had an opportunity to visit. In fact, I've visited with both municipal league and, and Qualchoy, you know, over the last several weeks. And the one thing I'd like to give an, an update on is the providers and a summary of that. I know, Mr. Whitfield, you and I had a chance to go over that a week ago. And I'd like for that to be dealt with as well as any other comments you might want to make. And then be prepared for questions. Yes, ma'am?
I'm BJ with Qualchoy, and it's nice to be here tonight. There's not an additional update as far as the providers, but we are still working through our list. Right now, we have, I believe, Bobby, you have the counts and totals as far as-
Can you give the summary, Bobby, in the same way you gave it to me in terms of the number of people who were not on Qual Choice's provider list, uh, as of a certain date, and then what's happened with those in terms of numbers? Cause I think you gave that to me, you know, about a week ago, if I'm not mistaken. If you would just go over that the same way, or y'all would, BJ, the same way, I'd appreciate it.
I will, Mayor, thank you. Mayor, the, uh, list that has been in question, uh, I think the number is 180, some odd, and the report that I, uh, left with you is that, uh, 35 physicians have agreed, uh, to join the Qual Choice network effective, uh, or, uh, effective no later than 1108. Verbally agreed, awaiting application contract, 12. The request for proposal completed, application has been mailed to the physician, 6. And, and then, Mayor, the other large number i- is that there are 59 physicians targeted, uh, by Qual Choice, um, on an as need basis. And what, what that means, um, is that if Qual Choice has awarded the business, they will, uh, pursue these 59 physicians to join their network. If the city doesn't, uh, become a client of Qual Choice Stevens, then there will be no need for them to, uh, pursue.
And actually, the 59, not all of them are physicians, they are providers that, that were on the list. A lot of them were mental health providers or social workers or those types of statuses. So while they're not absolutely, you know, they're not physicians, but they were providers that, that were differential between our, with, between our two network lists.
Didn't you give me a number, uh, Mr. Whitfield, of those that, some physicians that were no longer in business and some had moved, uh, wasn't that a part of your number too?
Yes, sir, it was.
Did you tell us that, or did I miss it?
Uh, no, sir, I did not. Uh, no, no longer in central Arkansas, uh, Mayor, there are 22. Cannot locate provider, uh, in central Arkansas, there were 15. Provider has closed practice or retired, the number is eight. And then, again, the, the balance are ones, uh, singles and, and twos.
So in, in summary of the 180, there are roughly 59 that are, uh, have not been contacted, that are on the municipal league list, that are not on Qual Choice list at present, and the remainder have been allocated either by not being in business or by having contracted or the other categories that you mentioned?
That's correct.
Okay. Anything else you might like to add, feel free, and then, uh, we're gonna see if anybody's here from the municipal league, uh, to make any opening comments, and then we'll, I'm sorry.
This is just a question for them. You know, I understand that Little Rock, you'll, uh, Qual Choice, Little Rock will be going with Qual Choice, January the 1st?
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm sure they have over 1,500 employees, I don't know, and then with the city of North Rock, close to 800 employees, how are you planning if, you know, you, North Rock does go with you with that increase? How many people are y'all planning on adding, or?
Well, it's within our planning as far as the number of lives, you know, to add to our list, we are certainly prepared, uh, for the additional business.
So you would be able to handle it January 1st with that, that much of an increase?
Yes. Right.
Alderman Robinson?
I got a question, and, and you all may have stated this at the last meeting, the rate that you have given us, how long is that good for? Is that?
That is for, it's a one-year contract for 12 months, so it would be good, yes, ma'am, it would be, uh, through December 31st of, uh, 2008.
Thank you.
Okay, any other com, questions or comments of, of Qual Choice?
Mayor, I've got one, I think we touched on this, but briefly, uh, the notebook that you provided us back several weeks ago has a date of the provider directory of 10/08/2007. How often do y'all publish a provider directory?
Typically, our provider directories are online, they are updated every 24 hours, and we, uh, provide printed directories on an as need basis, but it's not something typically that we, uh, we don't print and have them because the minute you print something, it's obsolete almost, so.
Uh, the health plans that I have, uh, been associated with the last 14 years, uh, generally, and they all been mostly Medicare, uh, have provided a new provider directory at the first of each month. Do you, could you produce a new provider, updated provider directory within the next day or so if, if it was requested?
Sure, we'd be happy to.
Would it list, would it list potentially the physicians that are gonna come onboard January 1?
They would, only after they have actually gone through all the process and are a, a provider that would be available through our whole network would they show up in our network. So, um, we could provide, you know, certainly a list of all the providers and have done on a couple of occasions that are in the process of joining our network, but all of them are moving forward, going through our credentialing process, um, but they do not show up in our directory or on our website until they are, until all of that has been completed.
Thank you.
Let me, let me just, I am sure that whether it be the league or, and I would imagine that this would be electronically available too, or Qual Choice, you know, that anytime somebody wants a provider list, I'm sure we'll be happy to access it online, make a printed copy and distribute it, uh, in, in any form that anyone wants, and would be happy to do that on an as request basis even daily. Alderman, uh, Ross, and then Alderman Robinson?
Well, this just, did we ever figure out how much it would cost if the city paid for enhanced plan if we did go for Qual Choice for all employees? Did we ever look at that? Or did I miss that?
I don't think so, I don't think so.
No, but it would certainly be something we could do, you know, take a quick look at and send, send back to you, but, um, you know, uh, we would be happy to do that.
So it's an additional $30 an employee, right, to go with enhanced plan, another 24 for dependent coverage, is that correct?
That's, that's correct.
That's per month? Is that per month or per paper, per month? Okay.
Mayor, the total figure, I, I, it's 1.6 million, I, I have it with me, but it's 1.6 XX, uh, as opposed to the, uh, 1.6.
Well, one of the things that, you know, once we, if we make our decision, obviously it's just a function of, of, again, dollars, uh, and, uh, you know, we're gonna be filing a budget by the end of the week. We've been working, Mr. Sisson and I, and, you know, Ms. Thomas and I have been working, uh, you know, for a number of weeks now and trying to make that recommendation, and, and, uh, you know, we'll, uh, we'll have a lot better position, uh, to have the council review where we are financially, and we'll be more than happy, obviously, to make that presentation too at the next council meeting. So we, we've got a lot of decisions to make between now and the end of the year. Any other, Alderman Robinson?
Well, I, I was just gonna make a comment about both insurance companies, and I've had municipal health since 2003, and I don't have anything negative to say about municipal health. I have two sons, 127, 129, and when they were younger, we had Qual Choice. I don't have anything negative, uh, to say about Qual Choice. Qual Choice paid their bills regarding my children when they were ill, municipal health have done their part, so, and, and when we changed from Qual Choice, we only changed because one of the children had graduated from high school and was moving to Washington State, and our local company had the same plan in Washington State. So we got the HMO out there, which we didn't pay but $10, so you know how long ago that's been, you know, for him to see a doctor. When we changed from Qual Choice to another insurance company, it was a smooth transition for us, for my family. So what I, what I'm saying is, I'm, you know, we've listened to both sides, and, and I'm just saying that I, I don't have a problem with either insurance companies, I think both are great insurance companies.
Thank you.
That's my point.
Thank you. Uh, remember now, we're gonna have a public hearing, then we're gonna deal with the legislation, and so we've got several options, so feel free to, you know, interpose your request for floor time, uh, at this moment, to Alderman Ross.
One more little question.
Sure.
The pre-existing on Qual Choice is 12 months, and municipal health is six months, where are we not trying to match these up as close as possible? You know, for a new employee, when a new employee comes in, it's six months, for municipal health is six months, and is Qual Choice 12 months?
Right, it's, yeah.
Is that correct?
It's six months.
It's, it is six months? Okay, cause when I was reading the latest that I had, it said 12. So it will be changed to six?
Right, and it has been waived for all, you know, all the employees can go on 1-1.
But I'm saying in future, the future new employees, it will be a six-month pre-existing.
That's correct.
Okay.
Any other questions before we now open it up, uh, to, uh, anyone from the league here? If there is, we certainly would accept your comments now. Uh, if not, we'll open it to the public. And I, just on a personal basis, I know that many of you may or may not have been aware, Don Zimmerman, you know, who, uh, is, is a longtime friend, executive director of the league, his mother passed away last week, and, uh, and, and we, uh, certainly send to he and his family our, our sympathies. Ms. Zimmerman, uh, was a longtime resident of this city, and her husband Glenn Zimmerman was the first director of the league, and we, we obviously, uh, are very touched by that family and, and, and their loss. And I'm sure any of you who, you know, know Zimmerman's know what a tremendous lady and, uh, and certainly her, uh, former deceased husband Glenn were as, uh, as, as they were a part of our community. With that, uh, the microphone's open, I don't see anyone from the league, please feel free to come to the microphone and, uh, make your comments.
Okay, I'm Judy Ross, and I do work for the city service, and when I first got involved in this, I did not think for one minute that I would be this far into it. And to me, it's not about whether Qual Choice or municipal win or loses, it's what we get for our money, and I personally feel municipal is really better for the money. Even if our deductibles go up, I still think we're going to be in a better situation. It's gonna cost us either way. If we go with Qual Choice and they don't come through for us like municipal have, we all are going to lose. I, I really want to thank everybody for stepping up and, and with the employees and coming forth to the meetings. I've got one of the contracts here, and in this contract, it states that all prescriptions are limited to a 30-day supply. Refills are limited to a 100-day supply with a copayment for each 30-day supply. Insulin and syringes will be covered with one copayment for each 30-day supply. Your test strips and lancets will be covered with one copayment for each 30-day supply. And that is not what we're getting now, we are getting 90-day supply free with municipal. I get my test strips and my lancets, and they don't cost anything. Uh, the comment that they made with the six-month new employee, it is not in our contract, it is not in their contract, it's just verbal.
Mr. Carter, will you note these points? I got over here without a pen, and, uh, if you'll note these points, and, and we'll, you know, we'll make sure, assuming that, that there's something that's been verbally indicated and not, uh, reflected in the contract, we want to ensure that if that, if Qual Choice is selected, that it is in the contract.
You know, uh, when they talk about doctors verbally agreeing to come into the system if we go with Qual Choice, that to me is almost, and I work in the mailroom and I work in the night deposit, that's almost like, well, my check's in the mail, you'll get it. And I'm just not sure that I, I personally agree with just the verbal. I, I really want to see some black and white that these doctors are really going to be in Qual Choice before we select Qual Choice, and then we find out that the doctors, well, you know, I really don't want it, so I'm not going to. I, I think that's a real strong feeling on, on all of us, is, is that the verbal, to me, is, is not, and they've had a lot of time to produce more than verbal agreements with these doctors. I think they should be able to have come up with some assignments on the doctors where, where you've got them assigned to Qual Choice. I know one of the police officers last week, uh, stated that he had had a problem with municipal, and he had to pick the phone up and call and initiate getting his bill paid. I don't know of any of us that works within the city that has not dropped the ball at some point with some of our jobs, and we all have had customers or clients to call us and say, this has not been done yet, can we get it done? I mean, I've done it, and I'm sure all of y'all have done it. My brother is still waiting on a phone call from someone within the council from way back in the summer, and, and you know, I mean, it, it's just balls dropped, and municipal's done it, Qual Choice will do it, and it's, that's just not something we can hold against municipal because municipal did not pay somebody's bill, and you had to call them and ask them, say, hey, look, the bill's not been paid, how come? In my, in my work, I do bank drafts, and there's been, there's been people that called and said, did you get my form? Well, no, I didn't, but what can I do? And we get it, we get it filled out, and we get that person on bank draft. And I think, you know, to say that municipal is bad because of that, I, I don't think that's, that's fair because Qual Choice will make the same mistakes. And that's about all I have right now. Thank y'all.
Microphone's still open?
Mayor Hayes, uh, the council, my name is Jim Nichols, uh, I represent the American Federation of State County Municipal Employees. I sent the mayor and, and provided a copy to, to the, to you council members. At the last, uh, public hearing, I raised a concern about, with the municipal league policy about if somebody was leaving this council building and they were walking across the street, and they were in the, the right of way, and they got, were to be hit by somebody, and, and that person that hit them is, is liable, then their hospital and medical bills would not be paid under the municipal policy. So my concern is a coverage issue. And I don't have a problem with an insurance company receiving what they have paid out from a third party, that's, that's subrogation, that's the way the system should operate, but the municipal league policy excludes these people, your employees, from coverage on the front page. You know, a lot of times, the insurance companies will take it on the back page, but I'm just concerned that, at least for those employees, they do not have insurance. And the way it will probably work, if, if they get hit by somebody that has a good liability insurance policy, or they have a lot of money, then the municipal league may pay their medical bills because they'll think we will get it back from the insurance company. But what if they are injured by somebody who does not have insurance? Then the medical bills are going to bankrupt them, that employee of the city. So I'm not here to really compare Qual Choice and municipal fund, uh, benefits that they have, deductibles versus, uh, uh, diabetic supplies and things of that nature, but I am concerned about the denial of coverage if, cause their policy says they do not pay if a third party may be liable. Now, uh, Mr. Zimmerman, and also extend my condolences to, to Mr. Zimmerman and his family, uh, we've dealt on these issues together, usually on opposite sides, but for a number of years, and he's a worthy adversary, and I respect him a lot. In his response, he says that the municipal league does use its discretion to pay sometimes when a third party may be liable, but I don't know how much discretion that trustees can have if their plan says they do not pay it. You know, are they, you know, question I might have is, that might be a, an issue as, as far as their fiduciary duties go with that particular fund. So, uh, as, if, if the council does adopt a municipal league, uh, policy, I would encourage you to put language in your contract that you will cover your employees that happen to be injured by somebody else, uh, that may be liable, that you make that part of the contract, because without that, uh, you have a number of employees who probably think they have insurance if something like that happened, but from what, from way I read a policy, uh, I don't think they do. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Mr. Nichols, uh, I got your letter, read it carefully. This, uh, decision by the Arkansas Supreme Court was handed down in 1997, correct?
Correct.
And the gentleman, I'm assuming, uh, Franklin, that was versus Health Source, the former, uh, uh, Medicare, or not Medicare, but Managed Health, uh, the plan. Medicare, not Medicare, but Managed Health Plan here in central Arkansas. How long or when did the Arkansas Municipal League implement this policy?
Well, as Mr. Zimmerman says, it was a result of that decision. I don't know when they did adopt that language in their, in their plan.
Okay, so sometime in the last 10 years though, is that correct?
Well, it had to be, yes.
Okay. Now, my next question would be of Health, of Qual Choice, does this same Arkansas Supreme Court decision apply to Qual Choice as it does to the Municipal League?
Yes, it does. As far as the, basically, the insurance company cannot get reimbursed unless the injured person is made whole. That means if, if they have, well, like the numbers that were mentioned in the Franklin decision, there was 124,000 of expenses, but yet the insurance company did not pay that much. And so the Health Source wanted to get whatever was available there and not, and the injured employee or the injured policyholder would not get anything because the insurance company was going to get first dollar. And I think what this decision means is the insurance company can get their money after, in your case, the employee is made whole, then they can get their subrogation rights. But I think their language puts it on the front end and it denies coverage. And I'm sure Qual Choice has a subrogation clause in their, in their plan, that they do have the right to go after the funds that may be received by the injured party in order to reimburse them what they have paid out. But it's gonna come on the back end. The Municipal League takes it out on the front end by denying coverage for that.
Unfortunately, Mr. Zimmerman's not here to answer any more questions about this. So.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Microphone's open.
Mayor, when PJ finishes, may I ask Mr. Sisson a question?
Sure.
Hi, I'm PJ Smith with Parks and Recreation. I didn't come with any kind of prepared statement tonight and I kind of feel like the defense attorney with my closing arguments before the jury here. I didn't even know what a blog was until this situation came up and I've, I've been on the blog and I've read and I'm really concerned. This is not a uniform and non-uniform employee issue. We should not be against each other. There should be no division here between employees and I really hate, you know, from what I've read, that that's, you know, what has happened. This is a health issue. Some of us employees have had major health problems. And I'm, I'm requesting, the mayor stated a while ago that haste makes waste and I really wished you would consider maybe putting this off, going into this January and researching, maybe there's a healthcare provider out there that's better than Municipal League or Qual Choice. It's just that it seems like that we have really rushed into this. I know there was a committee, but I mean, all of a sudden, it was before the commission, we didn't even realize, you know, how fast this was going and I don't think y'all realized how important that this issue is with us. And I thank you for letting us get up here and speak and I do hope that God gives you the wisdom to make the right choices for your employees. Thank you.
Alderman Whitaker?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Sisson, of all the duties and hats that you wear, one of them is as a trustee of the Municipal Health Plan, is that right?
That's correct, sir.
Okay, to, to your knowledge, has ever, has anyone ever been denied payments and not been made whole under the third-party liability exclusion?
Alderman, I do, I am not aware of any. I know none has come before the board and I know it's not North Little Rock employees, but I, you know, I can't directly answer that. I do know that the League has a subrogation clause, but as far as denying any of the money, I don't know of any of them.
Okay, all right, my, my understanding is that, that, you know, if the, if the insurer receives benefits from a third party, then, then basically the third-party liability exclusion prohibits that enrollee from securing additional money from the policy.
Yep.
That really overpayment, that's, that's what I'll call it. Is that?
My understanding, sir, is what would happen is the, the League had the right to go against the third, the, the person who injured the, the employee. We would, the League would pay the, pay what they had claimed and would go against the third party for anything they had spent, but, you know, I can't answer any, any more than that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Microphone's open. Going once.
Hi again, I'm Jan Eberly Wilkins with North Little Rock Parks and Recreation. And with Qual Choice, as I've stated before, we're gonna get less benefits. And one of them I am really having a problem with is they do not pay for foot problems and they will not pay for orthotics, which are crucial to people that have foot, knee, back, hip problems. Municipal League pays for all of this. And one of the questions I sent in was, since Municipal League does pay for orthotics, is Qual Choice also gonna pay for them in order to keep the patients' back, knees, and hips from hurting and causing further damage to the body? Here's what their answer was. Orthotics that have the goal of improving foot function and minimizing stress forces that could ultimately cause foot deformity and pain are not covered. And that has been really hard for me to understand why they would not let us have orthotics, have our feet taken care of to where later on in life, we don't have the neck, the, well, that could go the neck, the back, the hip, and the knee problem. So we're just not gonna be getting the same coverage. It's gonna be less, even though they positively stated it would mirror Municipal League. I want to thank y'all and I'm very glad that we have two representatives from the city on Municipal League's board. I think that is a plus. Thank y'all very much for letting us talk.
You're welcome. And, and let me ask, 'cause I want those, some of those questions addressed as, go ahead, Ray, but if we can, on some of those several questions about coverage addressed, if we could, when we get finished with the public comment.
Mayor Hayes, I'm Ray Vance. I think y'all know who I am. You know, we've been working on this for two years. This is a two-year process. I'm, I'm glad to hear PJ say that this is, was, is not to her a uniform, non-uniform. It has never been that for the uniform employees. We were out here looking for a better, a solution to a problem that we, we conceived as, as serious. I think we've had Municipal League now for over 25 years, as far as I can go back, I'm sure it's for, more than that. And I think the problem with, with that, that the people that have spoken tonight have is uncertainty of what we're facing with Qual's choice. Okay? I'll, there's not gonna be any guarantees, no matter where it's Municipal League or what. Municipal League wouldn't guarantee us that they won't come back in six months and ask for another $500,000. I mean, they guaranteed they were gonna ask for $500,000 if we keep them, which Qual Choice will not require. We, we've looked at, at a lot of this stuff for, for some time, but the uncertainty seems to be the problem. I gotta put on my glasses 'cause I wrote my notes down, I can't even read them now. Okay? With the, with, I've talked, talked to the guys over in Little Rock and they are definitely going, the, it's already in the works for the Little Rock employees to go there. That will, will add about over an additional 1,500 employees to Qual Choice's roles. The providers is a non-issue to me because I feel like where the, where the business is, that's where the providers will go. I think that when we get this many people, I, I think that just from the people that have just signed up just recently, from just the employees of Little, of North Little Rock has went to, when they add Little Rock to that, I think provider list will go through the roof and I don't think, I think that's a non-issue. I think that we're looking for affordability and the best deal and Qual Choice is the best deal at this time. Thank you.
Microphone's open now. If, we're gonna shut the public hearing part off and then I'm gonna ask Qual Choice a few coverage issues, so, you know, don't neglect your opportunity. Yes, sir.
I'm Captain Keenan with the North Little Rock Fire Department. I was one, a person that was injured by a third party and was never compensated for, as far as insurance for a concern. I, I have a motorcycle. I was going southbound on 430. Young man was going northbound, come across the, the medium, broadside of the car, hit, the car hit me. I went down, I brought my, all my bills and my medical expenses to Municipal League and the lady never left the room. She told me, she said, "We not gonna pay it." And I said, "Well," I said, "you know, I've been relatively healthy myself, been on the Fire Department over 24 years, never really needed insurance or anything like that for, even as far as having to, you know, stay in healthy." But when it comes time for Municipal League to stand up, come up to the plate in order to pay the bills or whatever, they said that they wouldn't pay it because it was third-party. And I told them, I said, "Well, the young man didn't have insurance." I said, "I don't have the means to go after him or pursue him." And they said that whatever come of it was my responsibility. And right now I'm still with the financial bills, the hospital bills, and hadn't been compensated for and I'm having to pay this out of pocket with no help from Municipal League. And I'd like to know, you know, you said that there hadn't been anybody that has come forward. I'm here. So, you know, what will Municipal League do for me?
Ms. Sisson, would you pursue that? Find out where that is? Microphone's still open?
Good evening, Council and Mayor. As Lieutenant Robinson with the North Little Rock Fire Department, I sent an email out this last weekend to all of the council members. I don't know if y'all have had a chance to read this, but I've also had some negative reaction from Municipal League. And my reason for our supporting of our Fire Department Brotherhood is to change this, is to bring in a company that has a series of checks and balances that we have authority that we can go to with grievances. With Municipal League right now, we have no, we have no recourse of action if we have a grievance with their policy. As, as they state on the very front cover of their, of their employee handbook, they are not an insurance company, so therefore they are not governed by the Insurance Commission. And that was one of the major reasons why I myself was trying, and trying to support the switch to an insurance company. I have also been involved in a, in a serious automobile accident that was involving myself and my wife. She had to be airlifted for a life, a life-threatening injury. Municipal League refused to pay because it was an out-of-network provider. She had to be airlifted. Municipal League said that they're not a preferred, they're not a preferred ambulance service, they refused to pay. They paid $500 of a $14,000 bill. Fortunately, I was able to get the, the company to write out part of the thing and I'm making monthly payments to repay the debt that Municipal League should have picked up. Thank you for your time. I, I hope you all make the wise decision.
Ms. Sisson, pursue that one too. Any other comments? All right, let me go ahead and I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and adjourn this public hearing and I'm gonna ask Qual Choice, somebody to come to the microphone and couple the issues that were offered with regard, and orthotics was one, and I think there may have been one or two others. You've got those, Mr. Carter?
I've got a few, Mayor. I'm not sure if I captured them all, but I've got a few listed down.
Okay, how about the orthotics?
Okay, I may have those. As far as orthotics go, the orthotics that we do cover would be for foot care for diabetics and that is, the other orthotic is excluded. So that is correct. Diabetic supplies was another issue that was brought up.
While we're on that though, do you acknowledge that Municipal League covers that? Or do you know?
To my knowledge, they do, yes.
Okay.
As far as the diabetic supplies, in our Q and A, we did answer that if it has gone through the mail-order process, that, that a member would get a 90-day supply of their supplies for diabetics, just as they are today with the Municipal League. If they go to a retail pharmacy to get their diabetic supplies instead of mail-order, they would have a, a one-month copay or a $30 copay and that's the same as it is today with the Municipal League. As far as the subrogation questions that have come up, within our policy, what Qual Choice will do is we will cover the medical expenses and then we will subrogate or go after the third party to see if there are other monies that can be recovered. So we are what, in, you know, like the pay-in chase where we will go ahead and pay, but then we will look to see if there's an opportunity to recoup that third-party money. The question about the providers, the one thing that I would say, it's very hard for a company like Qual Choice to say these doctors are in until all the paperwork is completed. But I think that of the doctors, what I would recommend is any of your employees to call their physician offices and just ask them about their providers because as people have done that, they have found that their doctors are saying, "We are in the process of joining the Qual Choice network and it's full steam ahead." So, you know, that would be my only recommendation for those that, that question our list. I mean, until it is final, that's why we've stated it that way in our, in our records. Back to you all.
Alderman, right?
Can you explain the drug benefit as far as, let me give you my example.
Okay.
Personally, I order a maintenance prescription that's a preferred brand name under most formularies, that when I order a 90-day supply that's filled at a local pharmacy, I pay a one-month copayment. With Qual Choice, I'd have to pay three one-month copayments, is that correct?
You would pay the one-month copayment.
For a 90-day supply?
Yes. For the ma, for certain, for the maintenance medications?
For the maintenance medication, for example, on page 49, under limitations on the prescription drug coverage rider, it said that refills, this is under item B, refills are limited to a 100-day supply with a copayment for each 30-day supply.
Well, there have been some, there have been some provisions to the city of North Little Rock that I'm, I would need to, are you looking through our ELC?
Yes.
Yes, right. That has been something that we have, have changed for the city of North Little Rock.
So it'd be a 90-day supply for a one-month copay?
That's correct.
Thank you.
For maintenance medications only.
Alderman Ross?
Just a question on that $500 for the ambulance when his wife had to be airlifted. Your ambulance service for non, for out-of-network is also $500, isn't it? Is that correct?
You know, I'd have to look at the benefit summary, Ms. Ross, to see that, but however it's stated on our.
Because I was just, on your ambulance service, it's $500 per incident?
Right, there are some limitations on ambulances.
Is that also, I mean, is that air ambulance?
The air ambulance, there is a, a greater benefit.
Okay.
And it should be listed underneath that as the section, under the same line. And I'll look at that and get you an answer to that.
Alderman Day?
Yes. PJ, those two gentlemen came a while ago and said that they were not paid because of a third party. Now, what I understand from testimony from y'all, the third party didn't have insurance or whatever reason, the firemen and, would y'all have paid their hospital bills under your, under your program?
Yes.
Yeah, I was fairly, 100% really certain I was not gonna vote for Qual Choice tonight, but I have never heard, maybe other people here have, of why an insurance company or would not have paid those bills. You know, I've known you for a long time and I just, I'm stunned by that, Mayor. I really am.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let me go ahead, Ms. Whitman, ask that you call 007-118?
Yes, sir, resolution designating Stevens.
Resolution designating Stevens Insurance LLC with Qual Choice as the major medical provider as the health benefit provider for city employees.
Let me ask for, well, let me just tell you what my position is. I think, you know, folks ought to know that, certainly this council, before we have a motion and then, you know, either discuss or, and/or vote. We have taken probably as much time on this issue as almost any issue that I know of that we deal with, perhaps even close to, if not exceeding, our contract with the, our new power provider that, you know, was also done with a great deal of agony. You know, we have a terrific set of employees. We've got a great community, and we've got citizens who will step forward to the plate and do so with their purse as they have supported, you know, elected issues when they put additional burdens on them. This council, as well as my office, is charged with the responsibility to try to balance the dollars that the citizens give us with, you know, the benefits and the wages to our employees. And without a doubt, this choice has been extremely difficult. You know, as I look to where my position is, you know, no matter how much we would like to please everybody, obviously, that's not something that this vote will do. If the vote came to me, and obviously, I'm gonna ask Mr. Carter, and I think Alderman Height, unless you've changed your position, you're still going to abstain from the vote.
That's correct, due to a conflict of interest, Mayor.
And so, I want to, I'm gonna ask the city attorney in just a second what the vote is, but that's only after we have a motion to adopt. I support Qual Choice. If the vote comes to me, it's my intent to vote to change carriers, and I do so, you know, obviously with a great deal of not necessarily reluctance, but also concern. I look at the 59 names that are on the Municipal League's list that are going to be contacted if this vote is adopted. And I would also agree that with another 2,000 potential, we'll say, patients, that there will be a real consideration by providers that perhaps aren't on this list and may decide to add themselves to this list. There are other things that I would intend to try to address if this council chooses to move to Qual Choice. You know, we've heard good and bad about a lot of different instances, and the one thing that is resolute with my office, and I'm sure this council too, is that we won't stop in trying to move forward and protecting the interest of our employees. $540,000 increase on top of a roughly $500,000 increase last year is a fairly big jump in a 12-month period of time. And, you know, while the league is committed to not increasing rates, they can review them every six months. I also know, and I've spoken, you know, with Don Zimmerman, that, and I've also said this to our applicants from the team that Qual Choice has put together, that if in 10 months or 11 months, whenever they'll come back and give us a premium for '09, that if there is a substantial increase, that we will be on the market. And in fact, there will be legislation that this council addressed tonight that will mandate that, I believe, within a two-year period of time. You know, it is a painful time that we find ourselves because medical costs continue to accelerate and accelerate much more so than the cost of living. So, you know, if we choose to change, it's not done with a great deal of thought and concern, and, you know, I certainly pledge to all our employees that, you know, I will continue, if we do change, to work with Qual Choice, both to gain additional providers, to make sure that those claims that are made and are rightfully entitled, that are paid promptly and on time, and that we also seek to expand perhaps coverage in the terms of what our budget, you know, may allow. Maybe there's, I know there's one thing that both Qual Choice has and the Municipal League have, because Qual Choice mirrored that, that is of increasing concern to me, and that is that there's a million-dollar cap, if I understand Mr. Sisson, per person with a $250,000 cap per year. So, if something should happen with the accelerating cost of, you know, medical providing these days, if I did something that was of some catastrophic nature and exceeded $250,000 in a calendar year, I'm out of luck, if I'm not mistaken, both for Qual Choice and the Municipal League, because those two provisions mirror each other. You know, we may look to try to get some reinsurance or to look to see how we might increase that. I know the Qual Choice option with the increased cost goes up to $5 million, and I'm not sure what the annual limitation is, if there is one. So, you know, whatever this council does tonight, you know, it's certainly my pledge to continue to work with our employees and to try to deal with the shortfalls, as well as utilize some of perhaps the revenues that may be available to try to cover some of those gaps. Now, at this point, you know, we are having a challenge in addressing our budget, and, you know, we'll have a balanced budget we present to you by the end of the week. But I have got to believe that, you know, with the significant difference between the league and Qual Choice, and with, I think, the opportunities to cover some of the gaps that may exist, that we are in a position, we'll be in a much better position to work toward both reducing our costs and certainly addressing those perhaps uncovered needs. So, with that, I'd like to ask for a motion to adopt. Motion and second, and then we'll go into general discussion.
Mayor, I was wondering about offering an amendment to go with Municipal League and raise the deductible to $500 for purposes of discussion among the council?
Uh, I mean...
I don't know exactly what time you would prefer that I do that, or...
Well, if you wanna do that, you know, I mean, I think what we could do is offer it in discussion, and, I mean, go ahead and move for the adoption of the resolution, and certainly amendment in that order would be appropriate.
For discussion purposes.
All right, so, motion made. Is there a second to adopt? It's on the floor now. You know, we can talk about that. You're free to make any amendments that you might like to make and discuss those amendments.
What, and I think it's fair to the employees for us to discuss this. It's an issue that could be before us, and that, my thoughts being that if we were to stay with Municipal League and raise it a deductible to $500, we could go ask Alderman, Ross, and Robinson to change their date from June 1 to June '08 in R107133 to review the insurance, begin reviewing the insurance again in June of next year rather than waiting for two years. And we know what we have with Municipal League, and I'm not saying that Qual Choice wouldn't provide a wonderful service to us, but in fairness to those employees that wanted to stay with Municipal League, I think we at least owe them the courtesy of discussing raising the deductible to $500 and stay with Municipal League.
I'll take as a motion to amend. Is there any...
Second.
Second.
A motion made and seconded. Jason, you wanna frame that resolution?
I have amendments prepared, and I can distribute these if you'd like now, Mayor.
If you'll distribute that amendment, I know there's several others that we have available, but at this point, let's try to keep things from being confused and...
Okay.
Just simply distribute the one about raising the deductible.
If you'll just give me a moment, I'll separate those.
What's the status of R107118?
I'll just go ahead and send some of these around. You'll see at the top, this is labeled Amendment A.
Yeah, as I mentioned last week, I had some amendments prepared in anticipation of possible desire of the council, and, you know, I'll just pass those to you. I don't know what, just kinda share them with your two co-seatmates.
There's three more. You got one, I think.
We got it.
I'll carry one around to Diane.
We're gonna discuss this amendment? We're gonna discuss this amendment?
Well, it's on the, there's a motion made and seconded, so it's appropriate amendment before, so, yes, we can, we discuss that. Let me just begin by, you know, indicating that I oppose this amendment. You know, $300, an additional $300 per person for our employees, particularly those that have family coverage and are more than one or two children, this would place a tremendous burden on those individuals and certainly those families. And for that principal reason, then I would have to oppose this amendment, but I just wanna make sure folks know how I feel. Now, we're in discussion on the amendment.
I don't know my concern about the $500 deductible. Sure, yes, there are some employees that, you know, probably can afford to pay this, but then I've been contacted by some that have said, if there is a $500 deductible, that they would not be able to pay the $500 deductible. And this is a household of six people, parents and four children, and they said they just cannot afford this. I think the intent is good, but we have employees out there that may not be able to afford it.
Yeah, and the other thing that I guess raises my concern too, you know, where we have a choice, you say that, you know, that's $300 at least per, now, I understand, Mr. Sisson, we have approximately 500 employees that have dependent coverage, and the remainder of our 800 and some odd have individual coverage, so there's, the vast majority of our employees have family coverage, if I'm not mistaken.
We have 796 total have insurance, and there were 497 have dependent coverage.
So, roughly 500 of the 800 that we're covering now have family coverage. You know, so, I think it, you know, when we have an opportunity to have, and obviously, it's not identical coverage, because we've already indicated, we've already found that there's at least one instance. But I would sure believe that we could give our employees, you know, better benefits and have some ability to not place that additional burden on perhaps some of those families that are larger and can least afford it. So, I would be opposed to this amendment.
That's a short comment. I know Mr. Whitfield and I have known each other for many years, and we've done some insurance battles together many times. Sometimes he'd win, sometimes I'd win. But I can recall many times where I've sit down in front of a potential client, and they keep changing the requirements, keep changing the equation on me, to the point where they couldn't make a decision, or I couldn't, I couldn't come up with a presentation that they really liked, so they didn't do anything. But in this case, for us to offer an increased deductible for our city employees and not give Qual Choice an opportunity to re-quote us with a $500 deductible, I think would be unfair to Qual Choice.
Well, they did quote us. They did quote us, Alderman, with a $500 deductible, and I think it shows a decrease from, and help me, you know, it shows perhaps a couple hundred thousand dollar decrease over what the current premium, which is exactly what the Municipal League is. So, they did quote us.
Okay. Mayor?
Well, Alderman, Thomas?
The only thing I was, I know we're really laboring with this, but it's not gonna be written in stone, whatever we do, it's just 12 months. It's just 12 months. So, that's the thing that I was thinking about, that we're spending a lot of time, and in 12 months, if we're dissatisfied, we make a change.
Mayor? As I said, I wanted to offer this as an amendment for discussion. The only other thing, when we get to R107133 with Alderman, Ross, and Robinson, I'd ask that they would think about it between now and then to go for June of '08. But as I said, I offered it for discussion, and I'd like to withdraw that amendment.
All right. Is Whitfield's second, is the second okay?
Sure.
All right, that amendment will be withdrawn, and we're back to the principal resolution. Any further discussion on the principal resolution?
Mayor, since I've been babbling tonight, I wanna continue to babble. I have some, I guess, some general observations, some general feelings about our insurance program as a whole. For a number of years, I think our employees, as well as those in the city family, have considered our insurance to be, you know, a right that we had. And of course, we have been fortunate in that we've been able to provide what I think was reasonable and good coverage and good compensation for our employees in the insurance sector. You know, if you go back to historically, these health plans began for catastrophic illness. And one of the things, as you read the material on a nationwide basis, you find is that, you know, everyone is using the health insurance now, is just, you know, solving the daily problems, whether it be the sniffles or headache, those sorts of things. And that's primarily what is driving the insurance cost, because we're just overusing it. I think Mr. Whitfield has indicated that his company is interested in looking at some management practices that might help with that. I know you have mentioned, and Mr. Rose has mentioned, some possibilities about some activities within the city that would help our employees. I think while we may resolve this on a 12-month basis right now, you know, we need to think probably three to five years down the road about what our position is going to be regarding the insurance for our employees at that point in time. While, you know, $200 deductible is really, really good from an employee's standpoint, it is not reasonable in today's market and medical practices. It's just not reasonable. And I think at some point, we're gonna have to face that, and I know the legislation that Ms. Robinson and Ms. Ross have, at some point, you know, they will address that. I think, you know, everything's getting more expensive, and we're gonna have to, we're either gonna have to use less providers, we're gonna have to use our providers less, and we're gonna have to take more responsibility for our health and become healthier. And if we don't do those things, this trend is gonna continue. You know, and we're not the only municipality that's faced with a 10% increase. I have told some of you, and I particularly want the firemen to know this, who've talked so much about this. You know, my personal health insurance this year, for my part, is going up $1,560. That's what my increase is going to be to me this year, and I'm already paying a good amount. So, you know, at some point in time, we're gonna have to sit down and face the realities that, you know, that we're paying. While the city has been good to take care of this business, and we've provided some good insurance for you, you're gonna have to take responsibility for your own insurance at some point in time. If you're healthy, it's great, you don't have any cost. That's all I'm gonna say, Mayor.
Well, let me just mention a couple things before I call for a vote. You know, this city spends $300,000, Mr. Sisson, or is it on our clinic?
Yeah, so about $350,000.
We spent $350,000 for our clinic that we operate in partnership with UAMS, and to me, that is a terrific service. You know, that's in addition. I don't know how many other cities, if any, afford that kind of a medical option for its employees, to have that kind of close and very responsive medical care. You know, we are... You know, we are, 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 are and will continue, you know, obviously, that service. Secondly, you know, I know that in our workman's comp, and this is accidents and lost hours, you know, this month compared to last month, we just had a report this morning, and I think we went down some 90% over what the month was, this month compared, or actually October, compared to October of, of a year ago. You know, that's a significant reduction because of our department heads were paying increased attention. We had a session not too long ago out at Hospitality House for our employees, you know, we are emphasizing that. You're right, Mr. Rhodes, and, and several others are grouping together to offer opportunities for our employees. I know if you're 50 or above with a membership to the new community center, you're able to do that for $8.50 a month. Health is an extremely important part of everyone's life, and we're going to try to encourage everything that we can to increase options for people to use to enhance their health. And, and so, you know, while, while we know that this vote won't please everyone, you know, we remain committed to trying to do everything that we can, you know, at least humanly possible, to support our employees and their health, both that it's covered and that it's inspired. With that, Ms. Whitby on the motion?
Bryant?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
No.
Parker?
No.
I'm abstaining, abstaining due to conflict of interest.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, Ms. Whitby, now, we'll take a five-minute recess for anyone that wants to leave, and then we'll go on to the unfinished business.[713.87] go on to the unfinished business.
No, they didn't. I will be addressing that.
All right, let me ask, I'm going to go ahead and reconvene this meeting. I know we've got one or two council members here. So I wanted to put the...
Let's go to the agenda, please.
Ordinance 07109, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
This is an ordinance, amendment ordinance number 7884, to establish an economic development rate for the North Rock Electric Department. This is the second reading.
All right, let me, Mr. Carter, you passed out an amendment to that, I think, that addresses some questions that were made.
It does. I can comment on it briefly. The issue was raised at the previous meeting when this ordinance was presented, about it being too general in nature, and that a little more descriptive language needed to be put in. We contacted the electric department, worked in conjunction with them to put in the inserted language which you see underlined, has a long sentence with one breath, primarily that this would apply to users who increase their load demand by 500 kilowatts, which I think mirrors our earlier EDR language.
Let's see, now we've read it, right, Ms. Whitby? Let me ask, a motion to adopt the principal ordinance, so we can deal with the amendment.
Move, spin the rules, place on its third reading.
Second. You want to do that first? All right, let's do that first, and on the motion, spin the rules.
Bryant?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
An ordinance, amendment, ordinance number 7884, to establish an economic development rate for the North Rock Electric Department, third and final reading.
All right, before we do it, we've got this amendment, right, Mr. Carter?
Yes, we do.
We have not adopted it, so if I could get a motion to adopt this amendment, then...
The move. The move.
All right, on the motion?
Bryant?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency, Bryant?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Resolution 07126, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution approving an economic development rate for electricity supplied to Polymer Group Incorporated.
Move for adoption.
Second. On the motion?
Bryant?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
New business, resolution 07127, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at 1208 East 17th Street in the city of North La Rock constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance. And I do want to point out that there was a numbering error, so your number 126 is now 127, and all numbers will proceed in that way.
All right, just tell us what number we're talking about, now.
This one is, is 127.
Seven or six? There is no 126.
You're... Just trust me on this. It's a resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at 1208 East 17th. That's the one you're looking at.
1208 East 17th. I assume we need a public hearing on that.
Yes.
Let's get a motion to adopt.
The move.
Second. Open a public hearing on condemnation of 1208 East 17th Street, 1208 East 17th Street. Do we have anyone here that wants to address the council on that piece of property? On the motion?
Bryant?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Let the record reflect that no one appeared, and that I adjourned that public hearing.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Next item?
Resolution 07128, in your packet, it'll be resolution 07127. It references declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at 1015 North F Street in the city of North La Rock constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
Can I get a motion?
The move.
Motion made and seconded. I want to open a public hearing on anybody interested in 1015 North F Street with regard to condemnation, 1015 North F Street. The microphone's open, going once, going twice, and we'll adjourn the public hearing, call a motion.
Bryant?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
And 07129, incorrectly numbered 128, a resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at 2209 North Poplar Street in the city of North La Rock constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
Let me call a public, given a motion.
The move.
Motion made and seconded. Calling a public hearing on 2209 North Poplar Street, it's 2209 North Poplar Street regarding condemnation. Anyone wants to address the council on that piece of property? Microphones open. Saying none, adjourn the public hearing, call a motion.
Bryant?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Resolution 07131, Mayor Hayes, a resolution, wait a minute.
130.
Wait a minute. 130's done. Yes, I'm right. 131. A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to accept the donation of certain property located adjacent to the Old Mill Park from Lakewood Recreation Improvement District.
What happened to the...
Well, you missed the one about the lien approval there, Ms. Whitby.
We voted on that one earlier, the lien.
Oh, did we? I'm sorry, you are ahead of me. I apologize. All right, let's go.
The Old Mill. I've read it.
Okay, let's call it.
I did.
The move.
Second. Any discussion? On the motion?
Bryant?
Yeah, thank Lakewood for...
They've given us to us.
Yep. We appreciate it, and we're going to build something on it, I think, aren't we, Mr. Rhodes, at the Old Mill? Don't answer that, we are.
Yes.
On the motion?
Yes.
Yes, Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Resolution 07132, Mayor Hayes.
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Garver Engineers LLC for design services on the US 67167 C-D Road south of McCain Boulevard.
Do I have a motion?
The move.
Second. Second. On the motion?
Bryant?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Gaines?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
This, as we know, is the first big step on moving forward on our Bass Pro shops at North Hills, and I appreciate the council's support. You know, every, you know, every representation that's been made to me, that we are, as you've seen in the press, getting ready to start turning dirt, and the planning commission has addressed, you know, the beginning excavation, and so it's kind of exciting to finally get this bit of a challenge to this council, and we've certainly worked with, you know, the developers and the highway department in moving our roadwork forward. Thank you very much. Next item?
Mayor, this is not going to be any way they're going to tell us how the traffic is going to be affected by the shops at North Hills and North Hills Boulevard, is that correct? It's just the design work for the access road.
Say that one more time.
This is not going to tell us what the traffic effect...
Not necessarily. No, no, we're, you know, we may very well, you know, try to take a look at that, because one of the recommendations that we're making with regard to this, you know, to this roadwork that we, you know, that could be subject to change, but we're going to, you know, recommend that we pursue that, is essentially, you know, a road coming somewhat parallel with an, well, exit from 67167 south of McCain, so they won't, so traffic won't have to go through that intersection, the McCain...
Interchange.
The McCain interchange, that they'll be able to pass that in a southerly direction and exit there somewhere in the general area of target, that they'll be able to somewhat parallel the existing right-hand turn lane going westerly on I-40, that will then move into North Hills. The recommendation that we're asking to be engineered, you know, is essentially having that join skyline drive in a roundabout configuration that we think will be overall the best place for a joiner. At one point, we were looking at Waterside, but because of the roundabout configuration, if indeed we go forward there, then skyline would lend itself more to that configuration. We have additional real estate, you know, there's less, perhaps less wetlands. If we were going to try to move forward with a stoplight configuration, probably the joiner at Waterside would be more appropriate. So at this point, you know, in talking to the, in talking to Mr. Marvin of our traffic services, you know, we generally feel that the roundabout configuration with the joiner at, that generally skyline would be the preferred way to move traffic in about around both the neighborhood as well as the access to the shops. So that's the general approach, obviously subject to change, but that's what we're recommending now at this point, and that's basically the movement that the planning will take. Next item?
Resolution 07133, Mayor Hayes, Alderman Bryant, Ross, Robinson, Gaines, Parker, Height, and Witcher.
Move for adoption. Second.
First?
Go ahead and read it, yeah, good idea.
A resolution designating certain allocations of state turnback funds received by the city of North La Rock.
Move for adoption.
Second. On the motion?
Bryant?